Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school board meeting of ISD 709 for December 18th, 2012, to order. May I please have the roll call?
Okay. Thank you. Member Cameron?
Here.
Member Johnston?
Here.
Member Casper?
Here.
Member Murneke?
Here.
I am here. Chair Wasson?
Here.
Member Westholm?
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hanson?
Here.
Secretary Tivo?
Here.
And student representatives Livsey? Student Representative Livsey?
Yes.
And student representative Pendleton. We are all here. Chair Wasson?
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could ask everyone, I'd like to have you join me in a moment of silence as we remember Vance Hopkins, an assistant principal who passed away last week, and also for those in Newtown, Connecticut, and the children and families of Sandy Hook Elementary. If you could join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you. May I please have the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by?
So moved.
Thank you. Member Saliga-Punko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Please, a point of order, Madam Chair.
Uh huh.
I submitted four agenda items for this meeting that would address the excess costs of the RED Plan that are partially responsible for the tax increases we're going to discuss tonight and the large class sizes. I have submitted these agenda items properly for many months and have also given previous notice on these items. One of these items was a discussion of why the cost of East High School went from $58.7 in 2008 Johnson-controlled contract to $63.7 on our latest status report from Johnson Controls. To not include this item on the agenda is a violation of our policy. I request it to be added and it will not require a vote as it was properly submitted in a timely manner. Also, I requested a discussion of the soft cost for the RED Plan, going from about $40 million in the 2008 Johnson-controlled contract to apparently about $80 million now. To not include this item on the agenda is a violation of our policy. I request it to be added and it will not require a vote as it was properly submitted in a timely manner.
Member Johnston, I did send you a response to all of those questions that you had. That will be my ruling as board chair. These items have been discussed at length on various occasions. We are still, as always, within the parameters and the money that we have voted on as a board, so we will move on. May I please have the...
If you will appeal the decision of the chair.
Is there a second? Is there a second for the appeal? Seeing none, that motion fails. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair?
Any other?
Yes.
Member Johnston pertaining to the agenda?
Yes, it is. I have a motion. I move to amend the agenda to have the school board convene an independent audit committee to investigate the cost increases from the 2008 Johnson-controlled contract to the present. Who approved them? When they occurred? When they were approved by the school board? This includes East High School, $5 million increase; Denfeld High School, $1.4 million increase; Lincoln Park Middle School, $1.6 million increase; East Ardean Middle School, $1.7 million; and Lester Park, $1 million. Total is over $10 million.
Is there a second to member Johnston's motion? I'll ask again, is there a second to member Johnston's motion? Seeing none, the motion fails.
Madam Chair, I have another motion.
Member Johnston?
Sure. I move to amend the agenda to have the school board convene an independent audit committee to investigate the soft costs of late August 2008 Johnson-controlled contract compared to now and why they have went from about $40 million to about $80 million and its impact on the tax levy and the large class sizes.
Is there a second? I'll ask again if there's a second. Seeing none, the motion fails. We will move on now to the agenda. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? That carries seven zero. Moving on to the reading and approving of the minutes for the regular school board meeting of November 20th, 2012. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Cameron. Any discussion? All those in favor of those minutes, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? That carries seven zero. And next, we will move on to the truth in taxation presentation. Mr. Hanson and board members, you received information of this in your board packets. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Wasson and members of the board. As you indicated, tonight is the night that we do our truth in taxation hearing, and I would like to share this information with everyone now. This slide presents the levy data. On the far left, certified levy from the pay 2012 year. You can see that it's broken out by fund, general fund, community service fund, debt redemption fund, and then the total levy is indicated at the bottom of the page. And for this current year, that amount is $25.8 million. The proposed levy for this year, for this coming year in 2013, you can see the amounts there. The total is $28,925,408. And you can see the items by fund. General fund, $11.2 million, an increase of $418,000 over last year, or 3.87 percent. The community service fund of $1.1 million, an increase of $21,000 over last year, or stated in percentage terms, 1.96 percent. The debt redemption fund, $16.5, or actually $16.6 million versus this current year of $14 million, increase of 2.6 million, or 18.9 percent. And the overall increase to $28.9 million, an increase of about $3.1 million, or 11.9 This slide indicates the history of the levy, of our local levy, going back to calendar year 1997. And you can see the trend over time. We've discussed this in the past. The big dip in 2002 was the change at the state level, taking part of the obligation for financing K-12 education off property taxes and putting it more to the state aid component. And, but those amounts have changed since then. The column in 2008, the increase there, the largest part of the increase between 2007 and 2008 was due to the implementation of Long Range Facilities Plan. We'll go over some of the other reasons for state aid and levy, local levy shifting that's happened over time, and those are some of the reasons for those other increases during that time. This is, this slide presents examples of what I was just referring to, towards of state aid versus local levy changes over time. And this slide, again, we've used this before, but it identifies two particular components of the local levy, namely operating capital and referendum aids and levies. Referendum, again, is the per-student amount that the community voted on back in 2008 for, per-student amount of $365.60. You can see, I'm gonna, these are not consecutive years, so be careful as you're looking at this. Pay 2006, these two items totaled $7.7 million. You can see 2.4 was in the form of aid, or 2.5 was in the form of aid. 5.3 million was in the form of local levy for total revenue to the district of $7.7 million. Since then, if you jump ahead to pay 13, that amount has gone down by 1.4 million in terms of total revenue. The state aid share of that has decreased by over $1.8 million, going from that 2.4 million that I mentioned to $602,000 during that same period of time. However, since pay 2006, the local levy component of that has actually gone up by $431,000. So much of this relates to factors that have not been updated, that are within the statutes, and general budget issues at the state that did not provide for any increases to those factors and how they're calculated. So the amounts between state aid and local levy have shifted over that time. The most significant increases in the levy from year to year, looking at last year, the obviously, the biggest one is debt service. Again, we've talked about that before. The increase from prior year is about $2.6 million. We've discussed the fact that this proposal does include an amount just under $1.9 million for, that will create the ability to reduce the fund transfer from the general fund where we collect the revenues from property sales. And given the fact that our, the sales of district properties that have been part of the Long Range Facilities Plan to minimize the tax levy as much as possible, because of the fact that we are behind where we had originally planned to be on those property sales, we are including in this proposal an increase, the, again, the $1.9 million in addition to what we would normally have there. The $526,000 for alternative facilities, and OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and the increase there is $411,000. That was due to an under levy from last year where we did not levy everything that we could have within OPEB in an attempt to keep the levy down. The $526,000 supports a small handful of projects, most notable of which is turf replacement at Public School Stadium. Key levy decreases are $243,000 in reemployment or unemployment insurance. Again, this is because our layoffs have flattened out, we're less impacted by that. We're able to bring that down. And then the operating capital is reduced by $100,000. Terms of estimated tax impact, I did get these numbers from the county auditor's office. On a $100,000 home, the estimate is $36.90 per year, or $3.08 per month. And again, I obtained that information from the county auditor's office. I know that, I did see in the paper that the, for an average house in Minneapolis, their 4 percent increase, they're looking at about $71 increase from year to year. I believe that average value home in Minneapolis is $171,000, but that's just one example of that I did see. Part of this presentation, we do need to present the adopted budget for this current year. Just a reminder to everyone, the district is on a July 1st to June 30th fiscal year. And so this is our adopted budget that was adopted last June for the year that we're in right now. We are in the process, or will really ratchet up the process after the first of the year for going through our budget process for the coming year. But that budget won't be approved in its final form by the school board until next June. So for this current year budget, the, oops, excuse me, the general fund, the revenues are up on top, broken out by fund. You can see that we have $85 million in general revenues. You can see how they're broken out there between state aid and local sources and federal sources. 3.3 million in food service revenue, transportation revenue of 5.1 million, community ed revenue of just about 5.9 million, and capital and building revenues of 7.7, 7.8 million, debt service revenues of 15.7 million, and miscellaneous revenues, other revenues, 2.7 million, for a total of $126 million in revenues district-wide. Expenses total $161,000. I'll discuss that difference of $36 million just shortly here. You can see that the expenditures within the general fund total just about $81 million for a budget surplus there of 4.6 million. Food service is meant to have expenditures at the same rate as the revenues and has a zero-dollar budget balance at the end. Transportation, 6.1 million. Community ed, 5.8 million. Forty-one point, almost 42 million in expenditures for the capital and building funds. I just want to note that that, you know, that budget balance that's showing there from the difference between the nearly 8 million in revenues versus 42 million in expenditures, there is a fund balance that existed at the end of our last year of 41.4 million. These are the dollars for the Long Range Facilities Plan project. They already exist in the fund, and that's why we have that planned shortfall, because we're planning to work on the projects and the, with only limited revenues coming in from, largely from interest. So the debt service amount, just about 21 million. Again, we're short there by 5 million, but again, there's a fund balance at the end of the last year of $7 million, and that's planned out as it should be as well. The other expenditures are 2.6 million, leaving a slight surplus there. So overall, the budget has a deficit of $35.7 million, highlighted by the fund balances to support that that I called out before. And so in summary, then, our recommended levy increase is $3,77,146, or 11.9 percent over the current year levy. This is nearly 1.9 million, includes nearly 1.9 million of debt service that's part of this proposal to compensate for the timing of property sales. And our recommended levy continues to be below the pay 1997 levy level. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I believe we're back on the agenda then.
Mr. Murneke, will you switch the switches for us, please?
Let's switch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for that presentation. We will now move into the audience participation, and I'd like to remind people that we take three, that you have three minutes to speak, and I ask that you be civil and no disparaging or unkind remarks. This has been a tough few weeks for many of us, and I hope that you'll take that all into consideration. Member Johnston?
Chair, excuse the interruption. I did have some questions for Mr. Hanson, and I would like to make a statement on that. I could hold that until we do that, or else I can, you want me to say them now?
We'll go after the audience, please. Thank you. So our first speaker is Shane Stulp, and I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name.
Good evening, board, superintendent. It's interesting to attend one of my first truth in taxation hearings. The reason why I stand before you tonight is because when the Connecticut school shooting happened, it really brought things to light to me as far as to all the different things that our teachers and staff members go through. I've been volunteering at Lester Park where four of my children are for the every Thursday morning since school has started, thoroughly enjoying my experience there. However, I am so astonished that we have 34 children in one classroom. And I come here tonight to hear that we need an 11 percent increase, and not once during any presentation did I hear where this is going to go. I appreciate knowing that our levy is still under the 1999, or 1997 levels, but I will also tell you that when I went to school in 1997, there was 24 children in my Lakewood Elementary classes. This has got to stop. Otherwise, you're going to have four children of mine, plus the two that are still at home, plus number seven that's coming in March, that are going to be going to a different school. We need to stop looking at revenue through property taxes only and start looking at the facts. And that is that there are parents like myself who are pulling the children out of the school, nothing to do with the staff members, nothing to do with the facilities, everything to do with the fact that we have misaligned priorities. I ask that you please, because when I read one of the articles on CNN about the Connecticut shooting and how the teacher was shoving her children in closets, my heart broke. One of the reasons why it broke is I thought, how would Mrs. Michael move 34 first graders? You know how many there was in that class? 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul King.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and the students. I direct my speaking here to the students, first off. Take a look around at this board here, and other than probably Mr. Johnston, you will see people who do not know how to manage money. If you are trying to become like them, I warn you against it. They, they have, if this was a business, this business would be bankrupt. The only reason it's not is because they would, they have a capacity to raise taxes. And I come here tonight as a homeowner in Duluth and as a business owner and who's seen, I don't even know how much the business taxes have gone up for me, but thousands and thousands and thousands. My home has gone up $500, or $600 in one year. And what you have here is you have people who, a lot of you on this board are from the education world, either principals or teachers, but you don't seem to know about math. You're like, it's like you've bought a home, like a married couple buying a home that's way more expensive than they can possibly pay for. And now you've found that out. So many mistakes in what you've done. I don't even want to get into it, and I've heard you have probably, or I'm sure you've probably heard from many people over the course of time how foolish the RED Plan is. Yes, we have fabulous schools now, but we're broke because of it. Businesses like mine are looking elsewhere. We're looking to move out, and you know, when we move out, that means less jobs. And also, what we're doing is we're raising our prices on our products, and when we do that, that increases your costs. We're a grocery-based business. We affect that market, so as we raise our price, your price of groceries goes up. Now, these people may tell you that growing government is the only way, but it's really not. It does not stimulate the economy. It does the opposite. And this board here, I've been to the city council of Duluth, I've been to the St. Louis County Board. This is by far the worst group for managing money that I've ever spoken before.
Our next speaker is John Stromgren.
Superintendent Gronseth, board members, and Bill Hanson, I am a homeowner and business owner. The non-voter-approved RED Plan will cost me more than, cost me $3,182 for my business and $441 on my home, for a total of $3,623 for 2013. This is over $300 a month just for the RED Plan, or an increase of 15 percent on my business and 17 percent on my home over last year's levy. Originally, I was informed that the RED Plan would only increase my home taxes by $7 per $100,000 valuation of my home. My home and land is only valued at $128,000. Nothing was said about cost to my business. Who is affected by these increases? Customers? All property owners, including raw land? Renters? Tourists who come to spend their dollars here? Prices for the goods and services business owners provide are increased and are reflected in the cost to everyone. Residents have less money to spend on necessities such as groceries, gas, heating, clothing, medical, and so on, and the amount that employers can pay employees. Some businesses fail to pass on these increases and no longer exist. Potential new businesses and new residents consider these additional taxes before coming to the 709 school district. Who is affected the most now that we are, experience the results of the RED Plan, such as fewer teachers, crowded classrooms, larger class sizes, reduced class options, reduced class hours, and so on? The students, of course. If they go on to further education, will they stay here without job prospects? It especially hurts the minority students or low-income students. How will these students find jobs when businesses no longer exist to provide an opportunity for them? How many homeowners, including retirees, renters, business owners, can afford to pay?
And I come here tonight as a homeowner in Duluth and as a business owner and who's seen -- I don't even know how much the business taxes have gone up for me, but thousands and thousands and thousands. My home has gone up five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars in one year. And what you have here is you have people who -- a lot of you on this board are from the education world, either principals or teachers. But you don't seem to know about math. You're like -- it's like you've bought a home, like a married couple buying a home that's way more expensive than they can possibly pay for. And now you've found that out. So many mistakes in what you've done. I don't even want to get into it, and I've heard you have probably -- or I'm sure you've probably heard from many people over the course of time how foolish the red plan is. Yes, we have fabulous schools now, but we're broke because of it. Businesses like mine are looking elsewhere. We're looking to move out, and you know, when we move out, that means less jobs. And also, what we're doing is we're raising our prices on our products, and when we do that, that increases your costs. We're a grocery-based business. We affect that market, so as we raise our price, your price of groceries goes up. Now, these people may tell you that growing government is the only way, but it's really not. It does not stimulate the economy. It does the opposite. And this board here, I've been to the City Council of Duluth, I've been to the St. Louis County Board. This is by far the worst group for managing money that I've ever spoken before.
Our next speaker is John Stromgren.
Superintendent Gronseth, Board members, and Bill Hanson, I am a homeowner and business owner. The non-voter-approved red plan will cost me more than -- cost me three thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars for my business and four hundred and forty-one dollars on my home, for a total of three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars for 2013. This is over three hundred dollars a month just for the red plan, or an increase of fifteen percent on my business and seventeen percent on my home over last year's levy. Originally, I was informed that the red plan would only increase my home taxes by seven dollars per hundred thousand valuation of my home. My home and land is only valued at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Nothing was said about cost to my business. Who is affected by these increases? Customers, all property owners, including raw land, renters, tourists who come to spend their dollars here? Prices for the goods and services business owners provide are increased and are reflected in the cost to everyone. Residents have less money to spend on necessities such as groceries, gas, heating, clothing, medical, and so on, and the amount that employers can pay employees. Some businesses fail to pass on these increases and no longer exist. Potential new businesses and new residents consider these additional taxes before coming to the 709 School District. Who is affected the most now that we are -- experience the results of the red plan, such as fewer teachers, crowded classrooms, larger class sizes, reduced class options, reduced class hours, and so on? The students, of course. If they go on to further education, will they stay here without job prospects? It especially hurts the minority students or low-income students. How will these students find jobs when businesses no longer exist to provide an opportunity for them? How many homeowners, including retirees, renters, business owners, can afford to pay more taxes? This whole thing has turned into a vicious cycle. Will you do the right thing and vote down this tax increase? Thank you for your time, and have a Merry Christmas.
Our next speaker is Lauren Martel.
Good evening. I had a speech here, and it was a ripper, really. But the chair came up to me before the meeting and was quite civil about someone very close to me and is quite ill, spirit of Christmas, et cetera, and going to hold the punch back. But let me just say that both sides have been pounding each other pretty hard for six years. One side won here in terms of getting what they wanted. It isn't paid for yet. That's the problem, the problem that I have. I mean, you've heard what people have been saying. You've got a bill here of nearly half a billion dollars, half a billion. And you've got an education system that, at the moment, is not competitive in the marketplace. So that, for some of us, suggests mismanagement of money. You spend that kind of money, you should have an education system. That's the envy of the nation. And yet you don't have one that is even competitive in this marketplace at the moment. And I've been out talking to people five times in five years. And you can call me a naysayer or whatever you want, but I care deeply about this. And I've listened to more people than probably any board member. And people are concerned about it. They think that this thing is just wrong, the way it's been done is wrong, and they think the plan is wrong, and they're very worried about what's going to happen here. And they're concerned about their children, they're concerned about the leadership of this board of this district. And I think it's just incredible for the superintendent to sit up there and say it's just armchair quarterbacking. The fact is, you didn't listen to everyone. You said you did, but you really didn't from the beginning. And now you're reaping what you sowed, and you've got to quit dodging around your responsibility and start taking some responsibility for this situation. And until you do, I'm going to continue to speak out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Ronstrom.
Good evening. Brian Ronstrom, 3860 East Superior Street. I was here a few years ago talking about my house being taken away by East. I would like to say that things are going better than expected there. We're working things out. I'm working with the school district, actually, on a lot of stuff along the Fortieth Avenue, East Creek, and it's working partnership. It's too bad that the site is too small for everything that a high school should have. But tonight's topic is on tax, and you know, we're here tonight to talk about your upcoming tax levy. I looked at my 2013 proposed property taxes and was not really surprised that the value of my home has gone down dramatically. I sort of let you guys take it back when you wanted to. You know, it would have been about fifty thousand dollars more than what it is now. The other thing I noticed is city and county amounts have gone down. The school district voter-approved levies have dropped. However, my non-voter-approved levies continue to increase. Now, I don't know much about budgets. I don't know about how this is going to play out, but all's I'm looking at is property values going down and your non-voter revenues going up. And the amount of this increase, I don't know where it shakes out. I really, you know, can't figure that out. And I don't know how many of you do either, because it's such a huge budget you're dealing with. You know, it's hard to get it all down. You get a very good idea. All's I know is state counties drop, school district non-voter levies increasing. If I look at the last three years, my property value's gone down thirty-eight thousand. The approved levies have dropped. School district approved levies have dropped thirty-two bucks. Yet the non-voter-approved revenue levies are up a hundred and forty-seven dollars. I don't think that includes the eleven point four percent you're talking about tonight. That will probably increase it some more, with the vast majority of that increase going to debt services, which is kind of scary, because, you know, it's Christmas time and, you know, the nation's just gone through a rude awakening. We shouldn't have to be, you know, I mean, this isn't the best time to be talking this stuff, but it's coming out. We should be focusing on maybe some other things, but it's dollars and cents. A few years ago, you guys decided to go along with a building plan. At that time, you sold it to community that's saying that this building plan would solve your problems, save your money, and it would only increase tax revenues three dollars a year. Doesn't seem to be working. You know, something's got to change. So we can't sit here and argue about it, but there's two things I'd like to bring up, is each and every --
Mr. Ronstrom, if you could wrap it up quickly, your three minutes?
I will wrap it up quickly. Two points. Each and every one of you on the board, ask some more questions. Come on out. You know, don't just sit back. Come on out publicly. Ask questions. Find out what's going on. You know, work with people. Let's try to get this thing settled without having to put your debt on the backs of property tax. Another thing I'd suggest is the levy that you're going to vote for tonight, that it's a done deal, but put a limit on it. Make this effect for one or two years, because in that one or two years' time, your red plan will be up in action, your properties will be sold, the kids that you thought would be coming back to the district will be back here, and the amount of money that you're looking for now might be in plan. So, you know, it's something that you guys put on the community. Show some support in it yourself. Limit this tax revenue for short term. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Richard Paulson.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the budget also. In reviewing the 2013 budget, I wonder how the board can continue to list revenues for the capital fund of four point eight million dollars, when no one expects that much in property sales by June 30th of 2013. It's not going to happen, but it's there as a revenue. Next one is in looking down, where did the seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars for internal service come from? I went to a lot of meetings early on. It was never in there. However, in the final, it is. I'm wondering what it is. Lot of money. The last part here is, how do you justify the one point eight million dollars increases for salaries, steps and lane changes, health care and pension, according to the district's estimates? The rest of us are not doing those kinds of things. The other night, I received the draft copy of the audit for fiscal year 12. It indicates the district has now had seven continuous years with the general fund deficits, totaling a grand total of thirty-seven point eight million bucks. However, you can deduct ten point eight million dollars from sales and conversion of assets, property sales and bond proceeds. So you have a net for those seven years of twenty-seven million. Can you imagine where we would be if we had that kind of money? This just can't continue. This district must balance the budget. It's been seven years. No one in the private sector, as you've heard here tonight, would be around today. They'd be out of business, one way or the other. The jobs would be gone, the business would be gone, and the tax base would be gone. It cannot continue. Twelve percent increases are not acceptable and not sustainable. Somehow, you're going to have to make some awful drastic decisions and be transparent with the public. Don't dodge me, and I'm talking to you, Mr. Gronseth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcia Stromgren.
Good evening, Board members. I usually come here with some more complaints that I've heard from people around the community, but I'm going to save those till next month. I want to read something that is very poignant, because it pertains to this district, although written by an actual journalist from the Timber J. When someone in St. Paul -- when is someone in St. Paul going to start connecting the dots and demand accountability for the systematic fleecing of taxpayers across the state of Minnesota by Johnson Controls Incorporated? After all, it isn't just the St. Louis County School District, ISD 2142, and its taxpayers who are paying the price for an expensive district restructuring that was supposed to save millions of dollars annually, but is now costing the district more than ever. The Duluth School District is in the same boat in the wake of JCI's disastrously conceived red plan that soaked taxpayers there for three hundred million and left the district in a mess. We saw another example in Flu Steen Plant, where JCI promised big energy savings to the city of Duluth and failed utterly to deliver. The company left the Lake Spear School District in similar trouble, and the Painesville, Minnesota, School District was headed towards its own JCI-inspired fleecing when folks there got wind of what took place in ISD 2142 and successfully ran the company out of town, all bet with a quarter million dollar payoff. What we have here in reality is a Fortune 500 company that views local school district boards and other public officials as easy marks. They pitch their plans to well-meaning but unsophisticated public officials with promises of big operational savings, knowing that in most cases, the company won't be held accountable when the promised savings don't materialize. In the case of the ISD 2142 group, the gap between the promise and the actual results is stunning. According to JCI's pitch, the school district faced a four point one million dollar budget shortfall, imminent school closures, and eventual dissolution unless voters approved the company's seventy-nine million dollar school construction and renovation plan. The plan, which JCI was subsequently paid nearly twelve million to implement, was supposed to save the district five point six million a year and turn yawning deficits into a million dollar annual surplus. As Timber J readers well know, JCI's story was fiction from the start. The school district had already resolved its budget problems and wasn't facing huge deficits. Teacher layoffs, approved in June 2009, left the district with a modest budget surplus. That's right, a surplus. But with implementation of JCI's plan, the bottom has fallen out of the district's finances, is now facing real deficits, rapidly depleting fund reserves, and the prospect of statutory operating debt. None of this should be a surprise, since the JCI plan was riddled from the beginning with bogus projections and assumptions that were evident with even cursory due diligence. Unfortunately, school districts who simply wanted to believe the plan was their salvation questioned nothing. Déjà vu, 709 School District.
Our next speaker is Tim Carter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Carter. I live in West Duluth on about 64th Avenue West and Cody Street, if you guys know where that is. It's been a long time, so I just want to give a quick disclaimer. I haven't given a speech in front of a teacher for many years, and I'm really nervous. So, and I've never talked in front of a board or anything like that. Talked in front of the city council earlier. But I just wanted to basically show a little bit about the effects of what these types of budgets has on the average person. That's just really the thrust that I want to get across right now. My wife and I moved to Duluth in 2002, towards the end. We paid a little bit of taxes in 2002. 2003 was our first year. I have a graph of actually what we have been paying. I'm sure no one's going to be able to really see this. I can maybe pass it around, or I could show it to the cameras. But this is a graph of our taxes that we've been paying in our property taxes. Maybe I'll just pass it around. The increases have been absolutely phenomenal since that time. We've been revalued time again. This year, our taxes have gone up, as you'll see on there, some ninety-eight percent from the previous year. And this is not some kind of mistake. We've spoken with people down at the assessor's office. They're sticking to their story that this is going to be a valuation. This is the value they're insisting on right now at this point. That's their story. Hopefully, we can get that changed. But as you can see there, our taxes have absolutely skyrocketed. And just wanted to let you know, I mean, you can see the pictures that are cycling through, if you guys want to check them out. This property that we have is nothing spectacular. We bought our house for forty-five thousand dollars. The reason my wife and I moved to Duluth was so that we could have affordable housing. We're from the Twin Cities. We wanted to get started outright. We were taught, don't get into a lot of debt. We were taught financial intelligence, which is something that should be taught in the schools, hopefully, that you'll start to do that and practice it yourselves. My wife is expecting a baby. This is our first child. We've been waiting until trying to set ourselves up financially, but now, in the year that we've been flooded, there's so much to say, it's hard to say it all. This is just really bad timing.
And you'll have to wrap it up, Mr. Ronstrom.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, actually, my three minutes is just now. Thank you. This is in the year where there was a massive flood, and our house is facing forty thousand dollars worth of damage because of this flood. Okay? We're getting some assistance with that, but hopefully, you'll have a chance to take a look at some of these photos. It's not right to double someone's taxes in a year. I don't care what the reasons are. Okay? It's not right. We can't stand for it. I'm not going to stand for it. I can't afford it. I can't afford to stand for it. And I'm sure there's a lot of citizens that would agree with that, and they're going to be behind me. So thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Katie Carter.
That was my husband, Tim. I am upset about it also. So I wanted to speak here tonight. I've never spoken in front of a board before or teachers. So thank you for your attention. Thank you for hearing your taxpayers that pay for the schools. Our increase, I know you guys said during your presentation that the voter-approved levies increased thirty-six dollars for the average person. Ours is about eighty-five dollars, and our house is not valued at a hundred thousand dollars. If you see those pictures, our garage is basically falling over. It's a one-stall garage with no garage door on it. Like Tim said, forty thousand dollars worth of flood damage we have. So it's pretty unbelievable. We don't have any kids in school yet, of course, so we're not seeing the benefit of this thirty-six dollar increase. With thirty-four kids in a class, I don't plan on sending my kids to public schools in five years. That's unreal. I know I wouldn't learn hardly anything, you know, size, that, class size of that. Thirty-four students, my average class size, I grew up in the Twin Cities, was probably around twenty, twenty-five. And even then, you don't have your teacher's attention to be able to get the kind of education that you really want. So I can't imagine what it'll be, you know, five years from now, if it keeps increasing the way it does. That's not a good thing for our kids to grow up in. Our increase went from a dollar figure of, I think it's under four hundred dollars Our increase went from a dollar figure of, I think it's under $400 we paid last year for our house and one lot. The lot that our garage sits on increased 278%. Okay? And this garage, if you look at those pictures, it's, like I said, falling over, basically. It's valued at $17,000, one lot, 25 by 125, with a garage that's valued at nothing. Okay? They don't put a value on it, I guess, at the assessor's office. So, if your taxes, I'm just guessing that all of you own your own home, went from $2,000, let's just say, an average home probably in Duluth is probably around $2,000. If it went to $4,000 in one year, would you be upset? Would you be probably talking to the assessor's office about that? I would think so. And part of that is because of your approved levies for our school district. And I heard that figure of a half a billion dollars that were put into buildings. You should put that into a student's education, not necessarily into the buildings, you know, the construction of those buildings. Should have approved some of that money maybe for improving their education, not necessarily where they're getting their education. Maybe spent a little less on the actual construction of it and put it into the kids. So, thank you.
Member Myrna Key. Thank you. That concludes our audience participation tonight. Board members, we're going to go ahead and discuss the truth in taxation. Superintendent, do you have any comments, Prior? Or, I'm sorry to catch you. Or would you prefer to take Board members' questions at this time?
Why don't you do the Board members?
Okay. Any questions from the Board at this time about the taxation? Art, did you want to?
Yeah, I do. Maybe Mr. Hanson could answer some of these. It might be easy. I noticed on the chart, the third page, this chart, this is maybe a minor point, but the first 97 column, which is kind of important since you referenced it several times in your talk, looks like about $29 million. The sheet I gave, that you gave me actually a year ago, I know we don't have it here, but this one indicates it's $25 million. And I don't know if you happen to recall this sheet, it was a spreadsheet you gave me, maybe a year or so ago. And it says $25 million for 97. All the other numbers agree. And just, if you happen to know, if you don't, we can talk about it later. But I just wonder if you knew, was there a mistake on the spreadsheet you gave me a year ago?
I don't remember the spreadsheet, Member Johnston. I apologize. Again, these plots were confirmed before, so I'm confident in the information for the levy in 1997.
Okay. Well, the information I have, and Bill's maybe seen it, 97 is the last one on the upper left there. It says 25. That's just the spreadsheet I gave, so maybe I didn't notice it last year. I know last year was also 29, but it appears that that may not be correct. We can check with that later. It's not a big deal. No, no, this is right from Bill, I think. Yeah, no, this is not mine. This is not mine. I had a question on the debt service. Does the debt service questions or amounts, does that include the bond payments for 2010 D, 2009 B, and 2012 B eventually? Those are the alt-facility bonds, or bond COPs?
They would be included. As to, I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm trying to remember the amortization schedule on the 2012 item you're talking about, and I just don't, I don't remember.
That doesn't start until next year.
Yeah, okay. So, this would, but those would be included. The alt-facility bonds are all included.
All included in the debt service?
Yes.
Accounting? Okay. I can hold my questions till later. I do have a statement I'd like to make, but I can hold it till anybody else has a question.
Member Cameron?
I don't know if this is necessarily a question, but, well, one of the speakers mentioned putting a limit on our increases, and I wonder if that's possible. Maybe Superintendent Gronzep can address that when he speaks. But I, and then I just also want to say to the audience and to our speakers that, I mean, it's heartbreaking to hear, and we do understand. I still believe that we needed to move forward with the long-range facilities plan. And I do want to acknowledge that there were unforeseen problems, such as selling our buildings. I don't think any of us foresaw the economy reacting the way it has. And also, I know that President Obama and others are working very hard so that we can avoid a fiscal cliff. So, we do understand. And I still support the long-range facilities plan. I believe that we needed to close buildings, and I believe that our students needed new facilities in an environment where they could learn. I've had a lot of questions or little notes from our student here, and I'm doing my best to respond to those questions from her. But we do understand, and we feel it as well.
Member Pendleton, did you have questions as well?
Oh, I was just gonna, I'm just like really curious about if, like, you guys knew that this was going to really affect people, how it's really affecting them? Or was it just like, this is what's for the kids or for the students, and we think that this is what we should do right now, and didn't look like further on into the future? Because it just sounds like everybody's like, oh, my God, all this money. And like, I don't know how that got messed up.
I can speak for myself. This is my ninth year on the Board, and we have the truth in taxation every year at this time. This is never an easy topic for us because of a variety of issues with finances. The top of my list is always our budget, and that will come soon. You both went through that with us last, right when you got on the Board. We do take into account those things, the hardships on people and what it will cause. For me personally, it's, the 11 is a tough number to swallow, and I've struggled with that. And I have talked to Mr. Hanson about it and Superintendent Gronzep. So, this doesn't come easy for us. Unfortunately, there are a variety of circumstances beyond the long-range plan. So, while we're here for education and students, we also do have to balance our budget in order to have this all happen. So, I don't know if that helps you, but that's where I'm coming from at this point. Superintendent?
I just wanted to respond to Dr. Cameron's questions and one of the speaker's questions. And the timing of this is in state statute that it has to happen at a December regular school board meeting. So, every district across the state during their December meeting has a truth in taxation hearing and sets their levy. And your decisions cannot affect the decisions of future boards. So, you can't set a limit into the future because it would be making a decision for a possible different board. So, it is in state law, and it wouldn't allow us to set limits into the future. Obviously, we can set an intent, but we can't set that decision.
Sure. I'd like to make a statement if there's no other questions or, I'll just go ahead and make the statement. I want to call it the actual contrary minority report. Again, when we stay in the truth of taxation, we continue to be below the 1997 level. That is misleading. Mr. Hanson did emphasize that we changed the funding schedule in 2001. I want to talk a little bit about that. The legislature changed the way they funded schools in 2001 due to constitutional concerns about equity in the way schools were being funded and the high property taxes that people had been complaining about. The state greatly decreased the amount of local taxes that went to schools. And instead, the state took over the lion's share of school funding. The drop in the 2001, which is the big hockey stick drop, if you want to call it that, in local taxes didn't occur because Duluthians stopped supporting schools. It occurred because the tax burden was shifted from local to state taxes and from local properties taxes to state income tax and state sales tax. And the local properties taxes were supposed to stabilize at somewhere near that 2001 lower level. As you can see, that has not happened in Duluth. So, if we want to compare apples and apples aboard, we have to start comparing not in 1997, but in 2001 and 2002. In only 10 years, that local property taxes for schools has increased from 8.1 million to the proposed 28.9 million, or a 250% increase. This increase in local property taxes for schools in Duluth is much more than the rest of the state increases. In fact, in that 10 years, the Duluth increase, this 250% increase is higher than over 80% of the other schools in the state. We have had a significant increase. I don't have the data here, but if you look at the debt service per student, we are also among the highest in the state in debt service per student. I want to say one thing is that increase is being blamed and not selling our excess property for the red plan. While that is partly to blame, what's being omitted is that selling a central property might allow us to not increase taxes for maybe two years, not lower, but not increase. What is being omitted is that a large share of this tax is being caused by the ill-conceived way the red plan is being financed. The red plan hasn't paid for itself. Even if we had sold Central and got our 10 or maybe even 15 million, there is still outstanding $400 million left to pay for red plan debts. And we still have 20 years to pay for that. $10 million doesn't make much of a dent in that. So, taxes will likely be increased in the future to cover these debts.
Member Livis Lee.
I just had a question. I was curious, if we're increasing the taxes by 11%, what are the immediate effects that we can see in the schools? Because I know a speaker mentioned that there were 34 people in Elestra Park classroom, and when I was, I know at least in kindergarten and first grade, I only had 19 people in my class. And that was a good size, but I can't imagine having more than that. I was just curious as to like immediate effects that we could see in the classroom as opposed to just balancing budgets. That's all I was wondering.
The percentage, the 11.9% that we're talking about is for debt service, which means that it is going towards paying for our debt, for building the buildings. When the red plan was originally financed, when it was all worked out, savings from closing buildings was a part of that. And we've realized those savings because we have less schools, so we have less buildings that were heating, less principals, less people plowing the driveways, secretaries, nurses. There's a lot less expense when you close a building. So, that was part of it. Selling buildings was another part of that. So, eight years ago, when this was all planned, there was a certain amount that was expected from selling the buildings that we closed. For a lot of reasons, they haven't sold. You know, one of them is a soft real estate market, another is the economic times, there's limited funding available for investors, and then there were some complications with zoning and different things. And so, for whatever reasons, we're behind where the plan expected us to be in selling buildings. That's what this 11.9 is about. It's about covering that amount from not being able to sell the buildings. When we sell those buildings, that money will then be able to cover this, and the amount that's transferred from the sale of the buildings could be more than what the levy portion is. And I know it's really a complicated description of that. But, so, the increase now could be a decrease when we sell those buildings and then come back to what level would be normal for that place in the long-range facilities plan. And I'd be happy to sit down with you two and show you the graphs, and it's a little bit easier to understand when you see it that way. But that was a really long answer for the money goes into debt service, so it goes into the buildings. So, as far as immediate effects in your school, that's more about an operating referendum that we could talk about in the future.
Just quick questions, but like, didn't the profit of the building go down, like, the money, like, the cost of the buildings, aren't they going down? So, wouldn't it be not what we, like, planned in the beginning? So, wouldn't we still be in debt even after we sold the buildings?
I'm glad you're thinking. No, it's a great, it's a great question. And the answer to that is, in June of 2008, there was a new level set for the expectations for those buildings. Because it was after the economy came down, it was after the real estate market came down, and so they did look at those and reevaluate them, and that was worked into the new plan when they got additional funding back in 2008.
Member Saliga Ponkel, thank you for being patient.
Thank you, Chair Watson. I have a few comments to make, just when we're looking at this, because I pulled out my statement for my suggested, I guess, property taxes or what it's going to be. And I looked at the county, and it's about double what the school district is, and the city's about the same as the school district. So, when you add everything, it's a lot of money, but the school district is closer to a quarter of the total. So, I just wanted to make that comment. And the other thing is, as a school district, we don't have the luxury of raising fees. We can't just add a streetlight fee or a sewer fee monthly to a bill. The only thing, fees that we can raise are athletic fees, activities, and school lunch, which hurts kids. So, we don't have the luxury. We are pretty much totally controlled by state mandates and federal mandates and that funding. And so, I just want to make that really clear. I was at a school board conference a week and a half ago, and we had a presentation by the Department of Education finance person, Tom Melcher, and went through how much percentages have gone up for school districts. You have a higher percentage now in the last 10 to 12 years of special ed costs, special ed students, a higher number of diverse students coming from different countries that need English as a second language. You have a higher percentage of kids in poverty. We have not received an increase to help fund these mandates. And what's really difficult as a school district, we are required to educate every child, and yet there are more mandates that make it more and more difficult. And our staff does an incredible job across the state, not just in Duluth, Minnesota, but across the state at still educating Minnesota kids to a high level. And I'm really proud of what Duluth does in spite of the increased costs. The mandates, we regularly are paying, just Duluth pays millions of dollars a year for these mandates that come right out of the general fund, and we don't have any control over it. We're not reimbursed for them. So, I just, I want to make sure that people understand what we're under. And I'm really confident that they're going to be looking at some of the way schools are. schools are funded, because there is a problem right now with all the mandates, and schools can't keep up. I know the five years I've been on the board, we have had mandates and we've had cuts, four to six million a year, and has nothing. In fact, if we did not have the building plan, it would have been a lot worse. I was very relieved when we were able, like Superintendent Gransas said, that some of the savings came from closing buildings, because those buildings are expensive. And one other thing I just want to say is, after being in the schools a lot, we're seeing less sickness in our schools, too. There's, if you could have seen what some of our schools look like with black mold and horrible ventilation, it is making a difference as far as children and staff getting sick. So I'm really appreciative of the difference. And when I go in the community, which I'm there a lot, many people, in fact, everyone comes up to me, they are so excited at what these buildings are doing. In fact, the business community is very proud of what this is doing for economic development in this community. So I just want to say some of these things. I don't like having to, I mean, 11.9 percent seems like a lot, but when you look at where we're actually at compared to the city and the county and the mandates, we do a really great job. So I just want to make those comments. Thank you, Chair Wasson.
Thank you, Members Saliga Ponkel. We are going to move on now to the report of the superintendent.
Before I go into my report, there was one letter that the district received from Bob Krittl. He is the Family Service Collaborative Board Chair, and he was writing to express the collaboratives' support for the work of the district's integration specialists and also encouraging the board to include these positions in the budget for the 1314 school year. You know, it's, it's been a tough couple of weeks for both the Duluth schools and, and for the nation. And tonight, we remember Mr. Vance Hopkins, who is the Assistant Principal of Ordean East Middle School. And he passed away unexpectedly on December 5th. And he was a good man who was passionate about education. He cared deeply about kids and about our community, and he's going to be missed by many. And our deepest sympathy goes to the Hopkins family. And many thanks go out to the staff and community for their support of the Hopkins family during this difficult time. We remember as well the families and educators of Sandy Hook Elementary School. As President Obama stated, "Our country has seen too many of these tragedies." As Americans, educators, and parents, we're deeply troubled by these events. And yet, as educational professionals, it's our duty to be, to bring a calm strength to students and to the families that we serve. I want to assure parents and community members that school safety continues to be of the utmost importance to our district. Our schools have excellent security systems with controlled access entries, video cameras, and safety protocols. We partner with the Duluth Police Department, mental health professionals, and other local officials to provide a safe environment for staff and students. And we encourage anyone to share what they hear regarding potential threats to school safety so that we can investigate them fully. And we practice responding to emergencies, too, to help our teachers and our students prepare for what we hope will never happen. You know, I've found great comfort by spending time in our schools, and I've attended holiday programs, which are amazing, and listened to the beautiful sounds of our children speaking and singing and playing instruments. And they take so much pride in what they're doing, learning new ways to express themselves, building self-confidence, and most importantly, connecting with others and creating wonderful memories of happy times. And I wish you the same comfort and peace this holiday season.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move on to the report of our standing committees. We'll begin with the Education Committee Report. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Johnston.
Yes, I just want to, if I could, compliment the superintendent. I know it's all been a hard time. Me, as I think as everybody, got a lot of calls. Before, before, before they happened, we'd been, I had a lot of calls from Denfeld parents. In fact, there was a lot there. This is the week before, and we all heard about that, too. And I always tried to assure the parents that, you know, part of safety is our number one priority, as the superintendent said, something that when we send children to school, our children to school, and we are responsible for their safety. And I just, again, want to, to reiterate to the superintendent and in the community, too, that the staff that we've got, I think, are extremely professional, and they're using their due diligence and always trying to prepare for the thing we don't want to happen. So I wanted to thank the superintendent and the staff on working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the standing committees, we will begin with the Education Committee Report. Member Casper.
Yes, this is the Education Committee Report for December 2012. We had Jeff Pretty, who is the Director of Professional Development and Research for the Purpich Center for Arts Education, who has awarded the IST 709 School District a two-year grant, both for educating our art teachers as well as providing additional opportunities for our students interested in art. He gave an update and some potential information regarding a grant that may be made available for school districts to apply for. Mr. Crawford, do we have the calendar on the schedule now? It is listed on our agenda, but we did not discuss that. Is that on the?
Right. This is just for informational purposes at this point.
Okay. So we do have a, a calendar that has been reviewed and approved by our quality leadership team last week, and it is in your schedule, board members, or your board book to review. We also had several presentations, one of them regarding the new science course proposal, which will offer conceptual physics to our kids, which we had several teachers before us that were very excited about the opportunity to, to provide this class for kids that may not otherwise be, have the requirements to take our standard physics classes. So there is some startup cost for the purchase of textbooks, but very interesting. Also, you'll notice that there is a prerequisite of some algebra. We had a presentation regarding adding or continuing with providing German 5 as a world language in our 2013, 2014 class schedule, so that's under our consideration as well. We also had a, a brief proposal regarding an early childhood education professional course titled Infant and Toddler Development. That is being proposed for us as well. It's a two-credit course, which focuses specifically on infant and toddler-aged children. And we also had a presentation on a new robotics course, which drew a lot of conversation from board members, as well as the industrial ed instructor from Denfeld that we would be offering it. So that is a semester class, which is a .5 credit for us to consider as well. Several field trip requests for us, one of them from the kids involved in the Future Farmers of America going to the University of Minnesota St. Paul campus on April 28th to April 30th. There is a cost with that, and all funds being for that would be raised through fundraising activities. Also, a grant applicant, or a trip application from the Business Professionals of America students to go to Grand Rapids January 24th and 25th to attend a conference. Also, the Duluth Public Schools Business Professionals of America, again, excuse me, are planning a trip to the Hyatt Regency in Minneapolis, March 6th through the 13th. Again, all costs of the trip would be raised through grant and student fees. And the Business Professionals of America students, again, are traveling to, in another field trip to Orlando, Florida, May 7th through the 12th to attend a conference there, competition. We have two students who received their diplomas. Philip Louis Torgerson and Peter Alexander Van Patton have both completed their coursework and received their diplomas. And that concludes our Education Committee Report for December.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Member Murneke. Seconded by Member Murneke. Any discussion? Items to be held? Member Johnston?
Madam Chair, 2A2, please.
Anything else, Member Johnston?
No.
No? Members Saliga Ponkel?
Okay, I have, let's see, it would be 2A4. I think that's it.
Is that it? And I will, I'm just going to make a note that the, the calendar that was included was for 1213. That will just have to maybe come out in this week's packet. Any other items or comments? All right, Member Johnston, we'll move back to the item 2A2, please.
I just want to make a quick comment on that. First of all, I, I support these courses. I think it's good to see us being able to move forward even despite our difficulty that we have on funding. I do want to say, though, that the curriculum person that spoke indicated that in the middle schools, our language classes have an average of 44 kids in the class. And I always have a hard time imagining how somebody can speak, can learn languages. I'm assuming they're beginning years in middle school and learning German or Spanish or Mandarin. And with 20, 44 kids in the class seems very difficult, so I just wanted to make that comment, but I am supporting these, these expansions.
Thank you. Members Saliga Ponkel?
Thank you. I just, Mr. Crawford, I just wanted to have you talk about the robotics course, because last week we had talked about it being just offered at Denfeld, but now I understand it's going to be offered at both high schools. Can you just, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Madam Chair, members of the board, last week at the Education Committee meeting, there were some concerns expressed by board members. As a result, I, I did have an opportunity to talk to Jim Arnt, who is leading the effort as it, with regards to career tech classes. And he indicated that he didn't anticipate having any problems offering the course at both of the high schools. It would be some additional cost, but he felt that it would be approximately an additional $5,000 to pay for additional tools and equipment.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the Education Committee Report, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That carries 7-0. We'll move on to the Human Resources Committee Report. Member Westholm.
The Human Resources Report this month is relatively short, but I will go through what's on our, our agenda, and then we can have questions. Staffing Report, action items, that's number one. And looking at what we have, there is one certified appointment. There are a slew of certified co-curricular appointments, and I think I have to go to page six. And altogether, there are 235 certified co-curricular appointments this month. One certified deceased, and of course, that was Mr. Hopkins, who has been mentioned here. And he's a person that I got to know quite well. My ears at Central, he really assisted me up there in a number of items, so that, I felt that personally. Certified leaves, we had four. Certified recall from layoff, there was one. Certified retirements, there were four. Certified temporary increase, there were four. Non-certified appointment, one. Non-certified extensions, one. Non-certified leaves, eight. Non-certified permanent decreases, 12. Non-certified permanent increases, 27. Non-certified promotions, there were three. Non-certified recalls, four. Non-certified retirements, one. Non-certified reclassification, one. Non-certified temporary decrease, one. Non-certified termination, two. And non-certified temporary increase, seven. And that is what is on the staffing report this month. In terms, before we open that for discussion, there are no other action items, there are no other informational items, and there are no other HR future items on our agenda. So that's basic information on the HR report.
Thank you. There, the motion was made. Is there a second? Member Casper?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any questions or comments? Member Casper?
Tim, as far as certified recall from layoff, we've recalled another laid-off position. Could you update the board now on where we're at as far as certified staff that are currently in a layoff status?
Originally, on the tenured staff, we had 21 people that represented 14.7 FTE. With this latest addition of a .5, we are now, we've recalled 19 of those 21 people on layoff, representing 14.2 FTEs. So the numbers don't quite add up, because one, one or two of these recalls were previously laid off the year before, so they were not on this layoff that we had at the, in spring of last year.
Okay. And could you also update us on where we're at with non-certified that are currently in the layoff status and the total FTEs and that as well?
Right now, we, on the non-certified side, we are looking at three that are still on recall.
So three employees and three FTEs?
I'm not sure the total FTEs. It was, I think originally we had 21 individuals, and now there are only three remaining, but the, the chances are they are not full-time FTEs.
So in essence, we have basically brought everybody back that either has wanted to come back or eligible to come back from the difficult process of laying folks off last year.
Yep. Very close.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the Human Resources Committee Report, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That carries 7-0. And we're now moving on to the Business Committee Report. Members Saliga Ponkel.
This is the Business Committee Report for Tuesday, December 18th, 2012. Okay, we have the typical financial report. We have no bids or quotes. We have no policies and regulations, and no contracts, but we have change orders for Congdon Park, for Myers Wilkins, for the Eastern Middle School, and for Lincoln Park. And board members, you can, you can see all those. And we have two resolutions. And maybe what I'll do is just go right to the first resolution, if that's all right, Chair Wasson. Okay. So you can get that by turning to page 45, board members. Resolution authorizing transfer of funds from the general fund to the debt service fund regarding financing of the long-range facilities plan. I move Resolution B 12-12-3059 dated December 18th, 2012.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Yes.
Two years ago, we used 3.4 million from the general fund to pay for the RED Plan debt obligations. Last year, we paid 7.8 million from the classrooms to pay for the RED Plan debt obligations. And this year, we will be using 5.9 million from the general fund to pay for the RED Plan debt obligations. I have repeatedly asked the board and the administration to be honest and level with the people of Duluth, and let's have a discussion on class sizes versus taxes versus RED Plan fund.
funding. But this discussion has never happened. Instead, we are in denial on how we have been ripped off by Johnson Controls and their failed financial scheme. Pulling this out of the General Fund to pay for the Red Plan debts is not an acceptable nor a sustainable way to run a school. In the last three months, well, let's think about this. In the last three months, maybe to paraphrase one of the speakers, says, there's been only one question by any board member on this General Fund transfer, which is a major, if not the major, cause of budget deficits for the last three years. This has been on our agenda for literally three months now, and I kept track of it. There was not one, there was one minor question. Again, we can't run a school in this unsustainable way, and therefore, I must vote no for this fund transfer.
I have to make a comment. Your opinion, I will respect your opinion, but there were some things that you said that I would say are not true. There has been discussions, and quite honestly, I know that I've had questions of the superintendent, Mr. Hanson and Mr. LeBlanc personally. So I'm going to leave it at that, but there, some of the things you just said, I would definitely disagree with.
Member Johnston?
Just a quick comeback. I agree, Madam Chair, we are entitled to our opinion, but we are not entitled to our own facts. The facts are the facts. If you don't, again, if you don't agree with me, you have to present something why my facts are incorrect. And when we can't even have a discussion on it, and nobody talks about it, it's kind of hard to get that out. And my facts stand on themselves, so I'd be glad to talk to anybody, anybody in this school, anybody on this board about that, because if we can't get the facts right, we are going to get the decisions wrong, and we are getting the decisions wrong.
Superintendent? Whoops, sorry. Did it go?
Did we get it?
There we go.
There you go. You know, I agree that we can have a difference of opinion, but not a difference of facts. And I think we've talked about that quote earlier in the week, in fact. Part of what you say is that the Red Plan and making the shift from the savings, the operational savings of closing buildings, causes the deficit. And, you know, in some ways, you're right. Initially, we could have taken the savings and applied them to the operational side. However, it wouldn't have solved the problem. An operating deficit would have reappeared one, if not two, years into that. So we would still be in the same position of facing an operating deficit, just as we have been for almost twenty years. So while I can respect your opinion that we should have done that at the time, it would not have solved the problem. And that's just not true. So we're going to continue to disagree on that, I know.
We'll take a vote on this Resolution B-12-12-3059. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
That carries six one, with Member Johnston opposing. Move on to your second resolution, please.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Watson. Okay, turn to page forty-six, and we have the Resolution Certified Tax Levy, 2012, payable 2013. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to hereby set the tax levy for 2012 payable 2013 at twenty-eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. I move Resolution B-12-12-3060 dated December eighteenth, two thousand twelve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Madam Chair, I'm opposed to this. Again, when I hear the people talk and the concerns that they've raised, I think that taxes are an issue that we do have to address, painful as it may be, we do have to look at that. This is an eleven point nine percent tax increase. Worst of all, we're having a tax increase, but we also have totally unacceptable large class sizes. So we have the worst of both worlds, high taxes and large class sizes. Something's wrong. We still hear denial after denial that this transfer does not have an effect on the classrooms. That is completely wrong. Superintendent and I do disagree on that, and the facts are there. And again, I'd like to present to any members of the community, and we do have to get that out there, and if we're going to have a discussion, which I encourage the superintendent to do with the community, we really have to have discussions about this issue. Taxes versus large class sizes versus the Red Plan. We do have these new schools, and we have to pay for them. Have suggested a couple ways to avoid tax increases and to keep money in the classrooms. We can extend the length of time to pay for this $400 million debt that we still have outstanding. Proctor did this last year, they did it. The St. Joseph School District in St. Louis did it. They had building plans and facility work in all their schools, and they did it without increasing taxes. I've suggested this numerous times, and it has fallen on deaf ears. But when I hear people talking about the concern about the taxes, that's something we should do. Don't get me wrong, extending taxes for thirty years instead of twenty, we still pay more interest, but the Red Plan doesn't increase. That's why we have thirty-year mortgages on our house, that's why we don't buy our house in ten years, we can't afford it. It's the same philosophy, and it's something that school districts do all over the country. We should be considering that as well. Other way that I've called upon is to call Johnson Controls to task for claiming that the Red Plan could be billed, quote, "both in a budget and tax-neutral manner," unquote. They even vowed to, quoting again, "guarantee the financial solution in writing," end quote, direct quotes from Johnson Control documents. The last two months, there have been repeated stories in the news Tribune about this looming tax increase. I'll say again, I have repeatedly asked the board and the administration to be honest and level with the people of Duluth, and have a discussion on class sizes versus the Red Plan versus taxes. I've asked this repeatedly, but this discussion has not happened with the people nor the board. In fact, this has been before the board for three months, this particular issue on our tax certification. And again, I have tracked the discussion, and the board has had on raising taxes, and there has been zero, I repeat, zero questions on, or statements made by anyone on this board about the tax increase. There has been presentations by our staff, thank you, but not by the board, and that includes committee meetings. And if you don't believe that, I have the committee meetings on tape, as people can look at these ones as well. Therefore, I must vote no on this tax increase.
Member Casper, I'm going to allow you to go, and then I have something to say as well. Member Casper?
Mr. Hanson, last year, we discussed the extension of the repayment plan, similar to what Mr. Johnston mentioned regarding extending the payment out for an additional five years or whatever, and ten years or whatever it happened to be. That, and we had a very, very lengthy discussion about that a year ago, when many board members expressed concerns that we're dealing with. My understanding is, is the cost and the difficulty, and I believe the phrase is malfeasance, and I may be saying that wrong, but to basically try to refinance this would be a difficult, if not impossible, undertaking, is what I left that meeting with, and I just want to, if you could clear that up for me, and as well as others that may have recalled that conversation a year ago.
Well, it would be very difficult to do it in a cost-effective manner. It would increase taxes, for one, to defees the bonds. The bonds that we currently have are not eligible for refunding yet, so you'd end up in a situation where you issue new bonds while still paying off the old bonds, and in the interest rate environment that we're in now, you would not be in a situation where you'd be able to earn enough on the extra money that you could invest for a while to make it financially worthwhile. And ultimately, you're going to increase taxes to the taxpayer, and, you know, that was kind of, I guess, the important points about the discussions that we've had, yeah.
Member Pendleton?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the class sizes. I keep hearing a lot of people saying, like, the kids, the kids, the kids. But I just want everybody to, like, keep in mind the teachers, because, yes, we do have very good teachers, but if we run them ragged, because, you know, we've given them so many kids and we're working them too hard, they won't be as good as they were from the beginning. So I just ask that we keep the teachers in mind and, you know, kind of try to figure something out.
Thank you. Members Saliga Punkle?
Thank you, Chair Watson. Good point, Member Pendleton, because I do know that we are running some teachers ragged. It is, I do want to make a point, though, when I was in school, I looked at my elementary school class sizes, I pulled out some pictures a couple of years ago, and all my elementary classes were in the thirties. Of course, that was many years ago. But I just want to make that point, but I do want to make a point as far as, if we don't ask questions at this meeting, or even at our business meetings, the committee meetings, doesn't mean that we haven't asked. Sometimes, we ask questions before or after, because we have a question about something, and we're not quite sure. We don't always need to be
Outspoken.
Outspoken about things. It's not always in my nature to be like that. And so I just sometimes need to just ask someone after a meeting if I have questions. So that doesn't mean just because it's not on tape that I haven't asked.
And I would concur with that. That's what I said earlier. I think each and every one of us have had multiple questions about this. We don't take it lightly. I will take issue with, Member Johnston, with him insinuating that the administration has not been honest or level. That just doesn't work for me. And that is your opinion. I am quite certain it is not the rest of the board members' opinion, and I don't want people to feel that that, those discussions haven't happened. I have been here on this board much longer, and conversations have happened time and time again. Superintendent Gronseth alluded to several changes. We, none of us had a crystal ball. Would I, like Member Cameron, would I go back on the decisions I made for students and teachers and education? Absolutely not. Does it make me uncomfortable tonight to be voting for an eleven-point-whatever increase? Absolutely. And these are the big issues as a board member, if you are, if you have a conscience that you won't sleep at night, and you will know that when we go, thank you for agreeing with that, Member Johnston, there will be discussions coming up in January and February that the superintendent is going to have with this community, and I want everyone to participate in some way. And then, if we get to that conversation where there will be educational levy, I hope each and every school board member will support that. Because last time, and I know this for a fact, Member Johnston did say that he would support it, and unfortunately, didn't. Those are the things that hurt kids in classroom, when we're talking education and a levy. That's where I'm coming from. Member Johnston?
Yes, this might find it peculiar, you brought up an opinion of a year ago on a referendum, but as long as you brought it up. As I've said earlier, we transferred seven point eight million dollars from the General Fund last year. Not transferred, we used that much money to pay for the long-range facility plan debts, period. There's no question about that. And I told this board that until you start being honest with the community, we have honest discussions, and actually tell these facts to the board and quit denying them, yes, we do want to have discussions. And we didn't have those discussions last year. It was the last minute, I finally got an agenda on there to actually have a discussion on information, and the reason that didn't pass was because of the poor information that was put out by the district. Wasn't because of, and because people were a little bit upset. Again, I do want to say that with due respect to Mr. Hanson, I think that we have to get another opinion about extending the tax levy. Everybody else does it, not raises the taxes. I'm not saying this is the panacea, because I'm not a tax expert or a CPA expert, but I certainly would like to get another opinion. The alternative is, we keep raising taxes. What's the alternative, folks? Keep raising taxes. That's it. So the alternative is not good, and I want to say again, we have high taxes and we have high kids in the classroom. You darn right it's hard on the teachers, I hear it all the time. And what are we doing about it? Nothing.
Superintendent Gronseth?
I just wanted to state that I stand behind Bill Hanson's work any day of the week. I can't think of someone with more professional skills for this position. And I also wanted to say that we did get a second and third and fourth opinion on those bonds. I know that you and I have had a lot of conversations about making this transfer, and a lot of those conversations have been that you didn't want this transfer to happen. What we're doing tonight is, we're not making some of that transfer, and some of that transfer is going on to the taxpayers, which we've also talked about. If that transfer isn't made, it gets transferred to the taxpayer. Is that a decision the board can make? Yes, but the decision has been that we don't want that big of a tax burden to go on to the general public. Right now, because of the lack of property sales, we're behind, and we're asking the taxpayer to help us out while we're behind, until we sell those buildings. And that's where we are. And I know we have had these conversations over and over again. We just came out of an audit. That audit was an unqualified audit. That means it doesn't get any better. They didn't find anything wrong. We do have people from outside the district coming in and looking at our finances and giving us advice. It's not two guys sitting in a room making decisions. It involves our entire staff and third parties.
I wasn't going to say anything. I'm not feeling that well. It's been a tough week. We had an emotional funeral on Wednesday, and the Sandy Hook affected me a lot. I have three six-year-old grandchildren, and it's just been rough, and I thought, well, maybe I won't come to this. But I, I'm going to say something optimistic now, and I truly, in my heart, I believe this, I think we're at the beginning of something. We used to have four high schools with four principals and four activities directors and four football coaches. We have two now. We're going to save money on this. It's just starting. This year, where we have two high schools, we used to have five swimming pools. And an old friend of mine, Bruce Watkins from Proctor, and the assistant superintendent here, said they are very expensive to maintain, and we had five swimming pools. We have two more modern ones now. We had five middle schools, five junior high schools. Now we have two, less principals, less maintenance, less building engineers. The new one at Lincoln, where I grew up, is much more energy-efficient than the old. I know that. You can argue with that with me all day, and I'll tell you. We're going to save some money this way on maintenance, on costs, on personnel. We used to have, I think, about 20 elementary schools, believe it or not, ones you've never heard of. Adams and Monroe, Longfellow, Ensign, Bryant. Now we have eight. We have less principals, less buildings to heat, less buildings to maintain. I think, especially for the young couples with, you know, houses and property, I think we're on the cusp of change. I believe this. I'm not whistling in the wind or whatever. I think we're going to see savings that can transfer to lower class sizes. But this is the first year. Next year, when we open Congdon and Myers-Wilkins, we'll be set, as one friend of mine told me. We're going to be set for many, many decades, and hopefully, we'll start seeing the savings accrue and we can get back to standard. And finally, I'd like to see us sell Rockridge. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Member Johnston. We have to sell Central. We have to sell Morgan. We have some properties to sell. This isn't against or for anything. I'm just telling you where I sit. I think I'm optimistic, or I know I'm optimistic, and I think we're going to have some positive changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Member Sliga Pankel, Mr. Westholm, because I had her turn her light off so I could get the other mics.
Yeah, it would work.
But I'm going to have her go first. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ross. And I, you know, I echo Member Murnicki's comments, because really, the costs that we were incurring as far as inefficient buildings and, you know, all the things, people that it takes to run a building besides clean a building and all of that. But I do want to mention, echo what Superintendent Gronseth said. We have a great business staff, and I really appreciate what Mr. Hanson does and what Jolie LeBlanc does, because they do an excellent job. And I appreciate that as the business chair. They are so capable and highly respected in this district. So I just want to, I don't want that to just go on and have you guys criticized, because you do a great job. So thank you.
Member Westholm?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a few comments. It's been an interesting discussion tonight, to say the least. But I sit here listening to all of this, and, you know, I'm a homeowner, I'm a taxpayer, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, so I don't like to see these cuts coming either. But I'm going to approve this. And the basic reason is that, based on everything I read and everything we hear from the state, it's a necessity. Until the state fixes what is a broken system, as far as I'm concerned, for three years, and this has been mentioned, I think, before, for three years, we're going to get no increase in our per pupil allotment. And that's the money that provides the majority of our funds to run our schools. No increase for three years. That's tough. And I've experienced big class sizes, because I taught for 30, or I worked for 30 years as a teacher and a principal in the district. I know how tough that is. I've experienced it as a teacher and as a principal, in talking to my staff and saying, "I'm sorry what we have to do, but this is a reality of what we're facing." So it's not a new issue. But it's going to be a tough one this year. So, you know, we're not making up anything. We're not making these statements for any political reasons. It's tough. We have flat funding. And until that system gets fixed, I think we're going to have continued problems. And that really troubles me, but there's not a heck of a lot I can do about it. At a minimum, I'm going to vote to approve this increase. And I know some people don't like that, but, you know, I spend hours, like a lot of the board members and others down here, looking at these numbers, trying to figure out what the heck we can do, you know, is it really this much of a cut? You know, what funding are we, you know, it's a very complex system. So it's very difficult. But I am going to vote to approve this.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, all those in favor of Resolution B 12123060, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries six to one with Member Johnston opposing. If you could finish your report, please, Member Sliga Pankel.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Okay, and I think, let's see. I was at the resolutions, let's see. And then with just the informational items that we have, and then future items are the review of the Memorial Park's master plan. So I move the entire business report excluding the resolutions.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
I'd like to applaud Item 1A. I'd like to have a vote on 4B. 4, yes, 4B. And a vote on, whoops, excuse me. And vote on 4B3. I meant 4B1, excuse me. And 4B3, vote on. And a vote on 4B4. And I would also like to have a discussion and a separate vote on 6B.
There's nothing on 6B.
There's, nothing there. Nothing is on 6B.
And we usually go through and vote the thing en masse. What do you mean, there's nothing there? We always go through and we vote the whole thing.
The entire report, but informational items, we're not voting on per se. We're just approving.
Okay, then discussion on 6B.
Discussion on 6B.
It says revenue contracts, none. Let's send us the other contracts, or expenditure contracts, excuse me, 6A, pardon me. I thought you were saying that we couldn't have a discussion because it was informational. Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
There's nothing in that 6B.
Oh, because, oh, yeah, pardon me, I meant 6A. Excuse me, I misunderstood.
Any other items to be held or discussed? If not, Member Johnston, you can begin with 1A.
Sure. The 1A is a financial report, and part of that is the audit, and I do have some comments on the audit. It is good and laudable that our books are being kept in order, and I commend the staff on that. But there are lots of concerns that I have with the findings of the audit. What concerns me is that what the audit report glossed over or entirely omitted. For example, the general fund balance has went from $14.3 million in 2010 to $6.8 in 2011 to $3.6 million this year. And the unassigned fund balance is even lower than that, about almost $1 million lower. Or for this year, the unassigned fund balance is around $2.9 million. Just to, just to, in parentheses, I would like to see this better presented on the financial statements, and the future of this can be better, easily tracked. Having this concern about the lowering unassigned fund balance, I have several reasons for having a concern. First of all, to quote our Policy 3017 passed by this board in 2003, "The board recognizes the importance of maintaining and enduring financial stability. To ensure financial stability, the district shall establish and maintain the unassigned general fund," unquote. If we had maintained our unassigned fund balance, we may not have been able, may not have had to take out short-term borrowing to cover the delayed payments from the state, which usually, which costs us somewhere around a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in unnecessary interest charges, if we would have had a sufficient fund balance to cover that. If we continue losing this $5 million a year, remember, we went from, from 14 down to 6, now down to 3, then in three years, that's an average of, two years, that's an average of $5 million a year. Next year, we will have a negative on reserve, we may have a negative on reserve fund balance. And that means we may be in statutory operating debt. That is not good. Thirdly, our Policy 3017 requires us to maintain this fund at 10% of our expenditures. According to our auditor, we have violated that policy this year and also last year. And contrary to discussions at the committee meeting, this board has never suspended Policy 3017. In fact, in recalling and looking over the DVDs and the discussion, the board was told by management that we had not violated Policy 3017 on the last go-around. So not only was the board remiss in not tracking our reserves, the auditor failed to inform us as well. Another concern I have is with the auditor, the lack of what was glossed over. She stated she did not know what the red plan savings were for last year, and she did not audit that number. She also stated that she could not explain, nor did she audit, why East High School went from 58.7 in 2008 Johnson Controls Contract to 63.7 in the current analysis. She didn't audit that. Nor did she audit the other $10 million in cost increases in the red plan since 2008. I'm not talking about Congdon nor Myers-Wilkins. Nor did she audit the $10 million and change orders from the red plan. $10 million in change orders has never been audited. Nor did she audit the JCI contract and the high soft costs that I've alluded to earlier. That's significant. Nobody even knows, nobody can answer me any of this. They've been asking this for years. No, it was not audited. The auditor did not audit that. We're talking about millions of dollars that have been unaudited. So the number of questions that remain on the table are too high, and that concerns the people in Duluth that are paying these taxes, as we've heard today, and those people that expect accountability and transparency in the way we spend their money.
First of all, I'd like to address the fund balance. There's several reasons that the fund balance has gone down. You know, we have continued to have nearly flat funding from the state and federal sources. While we all know that expenses have gone up, so our money doesn't buy as much as it used to. And the school board made a decision to spend down some of that reserve instead of addressing some of the operational deficits of the past. And that's been going on for quite a while. Another piece is, when federal money was allotted to school districts, or to states, the state held back that same amount. So money that was meant to help school districts out, to support them in tough financial times, went instead to balance the state budget, instead of coming to the state. All of those little things have helped to decrease our fund balance. And I also wanted to address the audit. You know, the audit is not about decisions that the board has made on spending, or the district has made on spending. It's not a judgment, it's an audit. It's judging whether or not we spent what we said we spent, that we got in revenue what we said we got in revenue. It's making sure that our business practices are as they should be. So I think what you're looking for, Member Johnston, is a judgment on these things and not an audit, because the audit was perfect. So I just wanted to point out that difference.
Member Sliga Pankel?
Thank you. The other thing I guess I want to address is with the extra cost for each of the buildings, we approve that as a board. And those items were brought to us as areas that the communities wanted, whether it was an addition or whatever. Each school had a design team to make the design better, and we approved those as a board. That is nothing that the auditor would deal with. We approved spending the money to make the buildings better, especially for the design team saying, "Oh, this would be a lot better. It would be educationally better for the kids," or whatever. There were a lot of different decisions. So that is the reason that the buildings had more money. And every school, we chose to approve that.
Just real short and sweet, there was nothing that was glossed over at that meeting. I think the auditor did a very good job in explaining all of those concerns that Member Johnston just mentioned, including our fund balance, and reason why she was not responsible for auditing certain things or questioning decisions that the board made. But there was nothing glossed over, and it was a very detailed, very informative presentation, very thorough presentation by that auditor.
Member Johnston?
Sure, just some quick comments back on that. Again, the auditor did not do anything with the red plan, period. Period. Nothing was done. Our $320 million project has not had even a scrutiny from any outside observers. None. Maybe that wasn't her job, I'm not saying it was, but it should be somebody's job. Spending the money, the last, when we first heard about the increase in East Western Middle School and all the other ones that I mentioned, was the infamous June 27th meeting in 2011. We found out about it. At that time, all those projects were already nearly completed. All the money that we'd been told that they increased, they had already, they were already on the ground. Just like in Congdon, when we found out that the concrete was already poured before we even approved the change orders, we found out in June 27, 2011, that all these things that we'd been approving up to then, all within budget, were actually almost $12 million over the budget we had been told, and they were already in the ground. All that money was already in the ground. That's when we approved it. That's why I'm asking for an audit, because this has to be looked at. We got these new buildings, where did the money go? People want to know. If we're going to go forward and get asked for a referendum, we better be able to tell people, like spoke to us today, where the money went. I'm not the only one asking these questions. Yes, the reserve is down. We still got large class sizes, extraordinary large class sizes. And proves my point, the money by drawing the reserve down did not go into the classrooms. And again, any savings we may have got from the red plan wasn't even designed to go into the classrooms. Were designed to pay for the debts of the red plan. People know that in Duluth, and they're upset. We want to have a talk about it, Bill. We want to have a talk about it. Thank you.
I'm going to chime in here that there was a huge document called the Review and Comment, and that is what was the audit for this long-range plan. Hours and hours and hours of professional people with degrees and background in numbers and how things work. There was a review and comment. It was submitted to the state, and it was accepted.
Member Murnicki?
Eichlin Schilling, an independent auditor, been around a long time. Independent auditors report on legal compliance for the state of Minnesota. District was in compliance. I move the question on this.
And there's a second by Member Westholm to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries six to one. Member Johnston, you can move on to, you can move on to 4B1. A separate vote. Do you have anything to say? A separate vote, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. Looking at these change orders. And I won't bore the board here by asking in detail, I've been looking over all these change orders. These are change orders that should not be there. All these change orders should have been incidental to the contract. These are insignificant. They should not be change orders at all. And I, you know, I'm looking at these, and these are totally insignificant. And I move to refer these change orders back to the Business Committee.
Is that a motion?
That is correct.
All right. Is there a second on Member Johnston's motion? Seeing none, that motion fails. Do you want to move on to September?
I asked for a separate vote on that.
Okay, let's have a separate vote on 4B1. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That carries six one with Member Johnston opposing, 4B1. Member Johnston, you can move on to your separate vote.
Sure, 4B3.
4B3, do you have anything to say?
Yes, exactly, I sure do.
All right.
Again, when you're talking about drywall for $66,000, any contractor that bid on this knowing that when they put up lockers, they had to fix the walls behind them, and add to give them another $66,000 is irresponsible. We can go on and on, and I think one of our members of the public talked about the change orders now are up to, what, $1.7 million this year? I don't think there's one of those change orders that should have been allowed. And I move to refer these items back to the Business Committee.
Is there a second to Member Johnston's motion? I see none. We will have a separate vote on Item 4B3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That carries six one with Member Johnston opposing. Item 4B4, Member Johnston, do you have anything to say on that? All right. All those in favor of 4B4, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That carries six one. And now we are down. Member Johnston, you wanted some discussion on 6A.
Correct. This is on page 52, it's expenditures contracts. Madam Chair, if I could, these will be part of the consent agenda which will be voted upon. And asking the chair for clarification, I don't have any problem with these except for one, and I'm asking if I could pull one of these items out for a separate vote on this as well. So I'm asking for a separate vote on a separate vote, if I could do that, please.
Mr. Hanson?
Section six items are for informational purposes. In this case, as far as expenditure contracts are concerned, these are items that I have signed, and so we bring them to you for your own information and awareness of what's been processed that way, but it's within the signature authority that you've granted to me.
I understand that, Mr. Hanson, I agree with that. But we usually go and we vote for the committee, and that is basically given de facto approval of these, and I understand that, but I'm asking here to...
I guess, Mr. Johnson, what I'm going to say is, we're not going to separate that item out. Thank you for asking, we'll just go ahead and vote it as a whole.
Then I have a discussion on item.
On that item?
Yes, I've asked to have a discussion and a vote on this, right. Item I'm considering is the last one on the list, Foster Jacobs &amp; Johnson. That's on page, I guess it's not a page number on it. No, it's later on, it's the last one, and somewhere further back, another couple dozen pages. Anyway, it's by something dated November 19, 2012, Foster Jacobs &amp; Johnson. What this is, is a contract to have another consulting engineer come in to train the personnel at our high schools to operate HVAC systems. We just spent $320 million, and we have to pay somebody else to come in and tell us how to run the systems? That is wrong. Sure, it's only $2,000, this could lead to a bigger contract for the rest of our 12 schools, so it could be a significant amount of money. More important, items like this, why weren't we given that with the contracts? I think, I believe Denfeld was, what, $55 million? We didn't get any training on how to run the system? We have to hire somebody else now to tell us how to run them? That is wrong.
That is the end of discussion for the Business Committee report. All those in favor of the Business Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That carries six to one with Member Johnston opposing. We have a special resolution tonight. Member Casper, could you please read that for us? It's very bad.
The board member attended?
Yes.
Sorry about that, you caught me unprepared. Board member attendance to MSBA Leadership Conference. Be it resolved that Independent School District 709 St. Louis County, Minnesota pays cost incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Minnesota School Boards Association 92nd Leadership Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota on January 17 and 18, 2013. I move Resolution SP 12-12-3058 dated December 19. Should that be the 18th? December 18, 2012.
Thank you for that correction as you were reading. We have a second, seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion? All those in favor of the special resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries seven zero. And now on our agenda, we are down to others. And I would like to acknowledge our two student school board representatives. Both Alex and Ariel have given a lot of time and energy to this, and I don't know if you really understand that you're not just representing Denfeld and East High Schools, but you're representing the children, the students of our district. And you have both asked very good questions and participated well. I'm hopeful that our next representatives will do just the same. I just can't thank you enough, and all of us wish you well in the remainder of your senior year, and we hope that you will stay in touch with us. But having said that, I'm just going to pass these down just as a little memento for your time and effort of helping us. And I see that Member Pendleton has her light on, and if you both would like to comment in some way, we would love to hear what you have to say.
Sure. I just wanted to say one thing about my school having the name. I'm not going to bring it up anymore, because it's my last meeting, I promise, but I'd just really love if our school had our name across it, because it means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the students at our school and my principal, and so I just want to say that. And I want to say thanks for having me. I really enjoyed doing this. It's like been a great experience, and I've learned so many different things, and learned how to pay attention and focus and listen, even when I want to go to sleep or eat something. But yeah, thanks for having me. I enjoyed the time I spent here.
I just wanted to add to what she said. I agree with everything. I'm really honored that my classmates chose me to be a part of this, and it's definitely been eye-opening just to hear all the different opinions and opinions from the community, which I wouldn't have had the opportunity to hear, and that's been really helpful. And I've talked to my classmates, and it kind of gets, or it gives me a broader view of how our school is running, or how our district's running, and I don't know, I just really have enjoyed it. And yeah, I wanted to say thanks. It was really interesting and really, a really great experience, so thank you.
Member Pendleton, I just didn't want to be remiss on the sign. We are getting closer with the city in having changes made to the Unified Development Code that would allow us to put the name on the building.
Do we have anything else under other, otherwise I do have something. All right. As most of you know, board members, this is my last night of chairing this board, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your support. We have had a long but good year. To the administration, I can't even begin to thank you enough for your work and your time and your efforts. I truly don't think that we say it often enough, so please know that we think it and we just probably don't say it enough, but we're only as good as those that are standing in our shadows, and that is all of you. And that goes for our teachers as well. Superintendent Gronseth, it has been a year since tonight, and it was a rocky start, and I am very happy to have been board chair with you as superintendent. You have served our district well. You have amended things in this community, in our district. I appreciate the leadership that you've given, our principals, our teachers, our staff. It's been a true pleasure to work with you. About a year ago, I sat here and I said, "What I would love to see is more people in this community volunteering in our schools." And I do know that there are people volunteering, but I just want to extend that invitation again, that our buildings do need some extra hands, whether it's mentoring a student or helping a child to read. And you can contact our schools and talk to the principals or whomever, and more than likely, they'll be willing to have you have a familiar face in our building. So I want to extend that one more time. And whatever has happened here tonight or in meetings past, we have top-notch school district, and we have so much to be thankful for and proud of. And I don't ever want us to lose that focus, whether I'm on this board or not on this board. But I do know that there are many and multiple things. I received actually an email from people in Florida who were at a holiday concert this past week praising us, and contacted me because I am the school board chair, about the unbelievable concert that they saw of our students. And from Florida to Minnesota, that was quite, quite important to me. I hope that we can continue robust conversations about curriculum and education. I know, Superintendent, that that's going to happen in January and February. I'm looking forward to being at many of those meetings. And for those who want to know more about it, there is more about it on, I believe, the district website. So again, my thanks to all of you. It's been a pleasure to work with you, student representatives and the administration. Thank you for all of your hard work. And I believe we are adjourned. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Thank you.